Five P M on June eleventh, this is the Eastham Elementary School Committee meeting. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access channel eight and through the town website at W W W dot E T M dash M A dot gov. Thank you all very much. Our quorum, we do have quorum, one of our members is not able to come this evening. And there'll be no agenda changes. Citizens speak. Any citizens who wish to speak? No? Okay. In priority business, retiree recognition. I will turn that over to Brooke and Bill.
Great, I'm, I'm gonna start actually, and so Amanda will get you to share the screen, please. So we have one retiree from central office this year, and then we'll turn it over to Bill, and he'll go through and acknowledge the retirees that are specific to Eastham this evening. So our retiree actually happens to be sitting so we want to acknowledge Joanna Hughes and all of her hard work. So I just have a little blurb that I'm gonna read tonight. So after eleven years of service with the NOSAT Public Schools, it is with immense gratitude that we see Joanna Hughes into her next chapter of retirement. Joanna started her career in education back in nineteen ninety, first as an E L L teacher at the Nathaniel Whitstone Middle School in Dennis, and then moved on to Annie E. Phail's Elementary School as a reading specialist for five years. In two thousand and one, Joanna was hired by the Henry T. Wing School in Sandwich, and she was appointed as the Title One Reading Coordinator, Reading Recovery Teacher, and Primary Literacy Coordinator. In her final three years in Sandwich, she, she served as the Assistant Principal. She decided to leave Sandwich to achieve her goal of becoming a high-quality principal. Since first joining us in July of two thousand and thirteen as principal of the Eddie Elementary School, Joanna has filled many integral roles. Her strong leadership, optimistic approach, and warm nature were immediately recognized by staff, students, and the greater community, and creating a positive environment for the school to grow and thrive. In August of two thousand and twenty-one, the NOSAT Central Office was elated to have, to welcome Joanna as the Director of Human Resources. This new role offered many challenges that she was able to overcome by going above and beyond to reestablish and renew the department with care and determination. Joanna's level of compassion, initiative, and dependability laid the groundwork to continue moving forward in a confident direction. This past September of two thousand and twenty-three, Joanna once again stepped up to the plate in a time of need, and she transitioned into the role of Interim Assistant Superintendent. Through this season of change, Joanna continued to work diligently to support our administration and lend guidance and instruction in any capacity that was asked of her. Joanna's accomplishments and achievements will be remembered for years to come, and our appreciation for her and all that she has given to NOSAT Public Schools is boundless. Joanna, we thank you so much for everything that you have done for us. Thank you. And we'll turn it over to Bill.
Okay, thank you. Wondering, oh, there she is, she is.
She's also right up there for game, Amanda, yes.
Hi, Karine. So it is an honor.
Hi, Bill.
It is an honor and privilege to acknowledge Karine Olson's thirty-six years in education. Thirty-five of those years here at Eastham Elementary, where she began as a special education teacher. She spent a few years teaching second grade, and most of her extraordinary career was spent teaching third grade with longtime colleague and dear friend, Tamsin Shaw. Karine is truly an exceptional educator with whom I've enjoyed working with for the past nine years. During this time, Karine has consistently demonstrated outstanding dedication, building strong relationships with her students, their families, and her colleagues. Her ability to manage the responsibility of a classroom teacher with such grace and efficiency has earned her exemplary ratings in all evaluation standards. Karine's flexibility and willingness to go above and beyond make her an invaluable team player. She is trusted and respected by all and is known for her dependability, commitment, and willingness to think out of the box and try new things. One of her most endearing qualities is her compassion and genuine concern for her students, especially those with learning differences. Her thoughtful and reflective approach to teaching ensures she always strives for the best outcomes. She is a tireless advocate. In her thirty-six years of teaching, Mrs. Olson has inspired countless students to reach for the stars and to shine brightly. Her classroom is always a place of warmth, encouragement, and discovery. She made learning an adventure and loves fun and engaging field trips. She just went sailing today on Pleasant Bay with her grade-three students. Karine, we are all better for having known you. Thank you for your unwavering commitment and passion. We wish you all the best in your retirement, and may you enjoy every moment of this new chapter in your life. Your legacy of dedication and kindness will continue to inspire us all. We wish you the very best in your retirement.
Thank you so much.
That's your, that's your retirement, right? Just in mind. And if I can just mention, so we have got some special gifts that are on their way to all of our retirees across N P S, these beautiful, beautiful sea glass ocean balls, and they're all engraved, and we have citations coming to you as well from Senator Sears' office. So that will be, I believe, by this week's end, you'll have it in, in your school.
Right.
So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And Karine, I would personally thank you since both my granddads switched beyond your classroom two years in a row.
It was a pleasure. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Karine.
Thank you. Right. And now, next on the agenda is, as you know, we have one person down on our school committee. The person who won the empty, vacated seat chose not to accept that seat. In her, in her place, we've asked Sarah Higgins if she would be interested, and she said she would be. But the school committee has to formally ask that she be appointed by, to the, but to the select board. So I'm going to ask for motion that we have Sarah Higgins appointed to our school committee.
May I make a motion to appoint Sarah?
Second, please. Second, all, um, any, just, all in favor? Any discussion prior to? Nope. Okay, thank you. I will, I will get email to the town clerk this evening when I get home to tell her this vote was taken and that we thank you and welcome you formally for our next meeting. We would normally have reorganization at this meeting, but since we didn't have a full committee, I thought it more proper to wait until we have a full committee. So once Sarah is officially named on the June seventeenth, I believe, meeting, we will get, pull together a quick Zoom meeting and just do a reorganization piece of offices and subcommittees to go. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate Sarah, all you're offering to do. Next on the agenda is the, I'm gonna get this straight, I'm gonna use the right words, the Multilingual Parent and Kidgiver Advisory Council.
And I think we're going to actually have Joanna do an introduction here.
Okay, and sure.
So very recently, our Multilingual Parent Advisory Council, they hosted, first of all, they're a very active committee, and Patty Obie is here today. She's one of our district E L L coordinators and a teacher at Eastham as well. And they worked, she and Paige Sullivan worked very hard with the Parent Advisory Council to create this multicultural festival day on Saturday, May eighteenth. So she's here to share some highlights. It was a big success and I think something that will occur again in the future. Yes.
So, hello, thank you very much for having me. I have some brochures that actually explains what the M L PAC is. It is a committee that is interested in outreach to advocate for multilingual students in our districts. Well, thank you very much. And with COVID, as with many committees, this committee kind of, this, this committee kind of, you know, had it, took a little hit in terms of being able to be organized and really have an impact on our community. But in the last couple of years, we've been working very hard on bringing the M L PAC back and being strong and active, and that is really much the credit to the, the parents who are organizing this and working with Paige Sullivan. I advise, because I was formerly in Fitchburg, which had a very large community of multilingual learners, and they were very, worked very closely with the community in terms of advocating for multilingual students in the community, as well as getting most people to be, to learn another language, because it's beneficial for any human being, any brain, to develop a second language. It is shown that the brain actually develops in a much more fluid, flexible way and gives you growth mindset if you are able to really master two languages. Full disclosure, I massacre Spanish, so my students can learn English. Not bilingual by any means, but I really believe in advocating for this particular group of people. So with that being said, our presentation is up on the board.
And just let Amanda know, and she'll change your slide.
So Amanda, would you please click? So here is a picture of us. We have been meeting on a regular basis at Snowy Owl. It is a business owned by a multilingual community member, and they've been very opening. It's a nice, warm place to meet, and it really has served to bring our, our committee together and talk about what our goals are. So next slide, please. So some of, these are some of our goals. It, we, they were looking to provide families with available resources. It's very important when you come into a new community, don't really know what the community has to offer, what resources and supports. And it's especially true if you don't speak the language. It makes it even more difficult. So we have been working really hard to welcome new families in and really connect them with other people that can, that speak their language and can help them navigate this new Cape Cod community that they've chosen to live in. And we've also been educating people about the seal of bilingual literacy. The seal of bilingual literacy is fabulous for anyone who can speak more than one language, because it's a great opportunity for our high school students, no matter what language they spoke first in their life, to actually get a seal of bilingual literacy on their diploma, which also can give you a boost up with credits at certain universities and state colleges. So it is a really beneficial thing to have, and the, and NOSAT Regional High School does have that opportunity. And what they end up, what they end up having to do is they have to be proficient on M C A S for English. That's a one-shot thing. Either you take it in tenth grade, you get your English proficiency or not. Then, in addition to that, we also have them take a stamp or an Apple test to show proficiency in another language of their choice. At the M L PAC, we have representatives that speak Greek, Spanish, Portuguese, just to name a few. So they are looking to make sure that their, their children have an opportunity to get that seal of bilingual literacy as well. And then we are looking also to grow the M L PAC and to bring awareness to it, and that is why we chose to have our very first multicultural festival this past May, which was a huge success, and we are looking forward to having another one next year. So I'm gonna show you some pictures and talk a little bit about this exciting event that just took place. So here, here we are. We had it at the Orleans Artist College cottages, and there were twelve countries represented by family volunteers. They were very proud to bring their artifacts and, and their culture and their language to the forefront to be centered at the cottages. It was a very family-friendly event. It was a little shaky with the rain, and we had some really exciting stuff happening in the United States cottage, which I was in at the very end, where we were, actually had karate and music in one of those little cottages, where they were doing cartwheels with like thirty, thirty people. I don't know how we did it, but it was amazing. Okay, click. So here's a sampling of some of the cottages and what they look like. There were games, and maracas, and Mexico was in the North American continent. We had passports, which the students, the children that had, that came, got the passport, they got stickers, they were able to really experience everything that each country had to offer, and then they came back. And when they came back, their families received this multicultural book book, which was printed in multiple languages with many different foods. I brought one for each of you so that you can experience a taste of our festival. So here are some of the activities. Speak Spanish with a native Spanish speaker, who had little booth up there in the yellow. Up in the corner, they played football, better known to us as soccer in the United States. There was music that they could try, they could try drums, and they dressed in authentic costumes. The children really, really enjoyed it. Click. Here's some more things. We had folk dancing, we had a steel drum performance. I, my, my son-in-law is gonna be very upset at me because he is from Brazil, and I cannot pronounce that cap.
Capera.
Say it again.
Capoeira?
Capoeira, yes, yes, still can't pronounce it, performance. And so that was the thing in the United States and Canada cottage, the two little girls are shaking hands, and then they cartwheel, and then they do this, this, this karate with music and drumming, which I had not been aware of, and I was so excited to take a video and share it with my son-in-law. But they had the World Cup soccer game, we had international food, we had international coffee, a great time was had by all. Here's a little video so that you can get a little taste of it.
Now, we've had problems with the video with sound, so we, you might just get just the picture only. But Amanda will be more than happy to send it out. It, it's just kind of quick and it goes through, but it gives you a flavor of the, the day's activities. And the smiling faces, oh my goodness, just awesome.
The children really had center stage.
Patty, is this program a triple Eastern-based program, or are there other towns involved?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking. The M L PAC is really a conglomerate of all of the region, all of our districts together. And for me, Sam Page is from Orleans Elementary School, but we have the high, regional high school teachers attend, parents attend. We also have some interaction from Modemoi as well. So it is really, I would say, a lower Cape initiative, and the, the interest is growing in terms of really supporting multilingualism on the lower Cape.
Good to hear, thank you.
So they've been presenting at every one of our committee meetings.
This is good.
I have a question. What monies are in the educational budgets for other language-learning people?
Well, that's a great question that I'm going to turn over to the administration.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking for, because it would, it would differ in, in the different districts, depending on where you're at. And so it's not something that's a commonality across all districts.
I'm, I'm just talking about NOSAT.
The, the region?
Yeah, yeah.
The high school?
Are there monies in the elementary school for a second language?
I don't believe right now there are monies in there.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
I mean, for example, Brewster added an additional hundred thousand dollars just before their town meeting to add a teacher. So you know, that, that's, that's an example of somebody that was put into, into a budget rate at the, the tail, and there isn't money right now, I don't believe, in Wellfleet, but there is some in Orleans. I think there's a part-time teacher in Orleans.
To help offset costs for events like this, we rely a lot on grant funding, and there were some local donations as well. The Mass Cultural Council, I believe.
Donated some money, so we access all kinds of points of.
Is that what you were looking for, Mary?
Well, I just see, I, I agree completely with the fact that I think people should be able to learn a second language. I spent my junior year of college at the University of Geneva in Switzerland, and I am a big proponent of that type of, of education, and I was just wondering what we provide our students in the NOSAT region for, if you're gonna start something at a lower level, you've got to have it at the middle school, you've got to.
That's exactly correct. That's exactly correct, and that's something, and to be honest with you, one of the biggest problems we're having, and we're not the only school district, having it is hiring people to, to fill those positions right now.
Capable of teaching it, a, a second language.
Yeah, it's been, it's definitely been problematic for us, particularly at the middle school level. And so I think we've just hired someone, I think, within the last week, right? Am I right on that? Yeah. So, but we've been a year without.
I'm curious to hear too, just. Just curious to hear, not so much on the learning a language formally in a school, but you were mentioning kind of one of the goals being to help families and get questions answered. Just curious can what, what some recurring questions have been that families are, are asking.
One of, thank you for asking that, because it's, it, one of the things that is the most important to our families here that have other cultures and speak other languages is that their cultures and their languages are preserved. They really are interested in making sure that their children not only get bilingualism, but bilingual literacy. So they want to make sure that their children are able to read and write in the language that they speak at home. So that's one of their main purposes in terms of that, which goes back to what you're speaking to around, you can be bilingual, which means you can have the oracy. But if you're not instructed in how to read and write in that language, that there's something that's greatly lost. So they've been articulating, looking for something like that. We've been trying to work on being innovative and like the superintendent has said, it is very difficult to find people that can instruct in that, in that particular capacity. And that's where we ran into problems this year in trying to figure out how to kind of create some sort of world language school, after-school program. We've looked at multiple online programs to try to help address the literacy in multiple languages. We're still working on it. We're, we have some ideas, but nothing that we can actually activate and, and start as of yet, but we are still exploring options.
Hey, any? Any groups outside of the school, just outside of the school setting that do this? I ask this only because I come from a community in Rhode Island, there was a very heavily immigrated Portuguese population. And they had Sunday school for the kids, and the Portuguese, they called the Portuguese club did. And they were taught all those things, the, the writing, the language, because my daughter has several friends who are Portuguese descent, who's to the same speak Portuguese and have been to Portugal, visit a family. And it just, it just amazed me, because being of Italian background, I was of the generation where our grandparents said, no, you're English, because you're in America. So we cut, we lost all that, yes, have some of traditions, but not the language and not the religion for sure. So I don't know whether any of those, any groups of that around here on Cape.
There are some families that drive off Cape to have their children attend such schools, Saturday schools. But it would be really nice if we could increase the networking of our lower Cape residents that speak other languages and have them come together, because by themselves, there, there's Bulgarian and Russian, but it's really low incidence, is what in, in the ESL field we would call it. So having them come together and network because they have some common experiences with coming to the lower Cape and, and trying to assimilate into the culture here. So bringing them together here on the lower Cape is essential in turn, but being able to address their needs in terms of their different literacy for the different languages. And Paige and I have some good ideas, but like superintendent said, is getting the right people in the place, especially down here, is just very difficult in the hiring and, and finding the people that are able to do that, but we're working on it.
Well, I thank you for all you've done to this degree. This is a large, large amount of work, and you've got a great output to show for it.
It's a labor of love.
Yeah, it tells.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you so much for presenting, and thank you to everyone for all the hard work that they've done. That, that festival just looked fabulous, like it really did, and I know you, you were saying, and I think you and your mom both went, yes. So awesome, awesome for, I think, for absolutely everyone that day. So thank you for everything.
Thank you for all your time, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, next we will be going to administrative reports. I have no other report to say, having that drop that spot meeting once we get all our members in place. Mr. Cosby, the principal's report, please.
Okay, thank you. Just good evening, everyone. Again, we had an exceptional year, and I just appreciate all the support from the school committee, Eastham families and community members. As you know, it takes a village to create a positive school community like Eastham Elementary. And I just, you know, some recent highlights as we, you know, entering into the last few weeks of school. We had our first ever all-school field trip aboard the Cape Cod Railroad. Had a beautiful day. We learned about life in the forest from Thornton Burgess Society Naturalists and ended up stopping under the Bourne Bridge for lunch. It was, it was just a great day with the entire school, you know, cruising along on the train. It was fun. Oh, and the other day, our NOSAT and Eastham Elementary graduates walked gracefully through the halls of Eastham Elementary. It was great to see all of those. My goodness, you know, it's tough to recognize some of them, you know, as they become, you know, graduates. And I heard that graduation went really well, too. Yeah, what a great day. Grade three went sailing today with the Pleasant Bay Community Boaters, boating instructors, and grade four and two are heading to the Museum of Natural History in Brewster. And grade four students, we started that again, are planning turnips. We went on two, on Monday over to the Redberry Farm across the street. And the other grade four class will go on Thursday, and then when they're in fifth grade, they will harvest the, the turnips. So it's been a great tradition that we've had with Mr. Wells. Let's see, also, Wellfleet and Eastham grade five students had their collaborative band day today at E E S. They sounded great. And then our grade five graduation is Thursday, June twentieth, and you're all welcome to attend if you'd like. Just a couple of quick staff changes that are happening next year. Dorothy Paul will be our new first-grade teacher. She's been a, a longtime ed assistant, and we're excited for her to have a new opportunity in grade one. And that means that Nicolette Bartolini, who's been in grade one for, for many, many years, is becoming our reading specialist, and then Beth Crompton, who is in that role, is now becoming our new three, third-grade teacher to to replace Karine Olson. So those are some of the changes that we have happening next year. And I did include, you know, and I think I, to be honest, I, I've updated you and kept you informed on, you know, where we are with Ruler. I, I just sent a bullet list of things. I'd be happy to field some questions. But we're at this point, we, we have a ruler team in place, which consists of our adjustment counselor, a kindergarten teacher, and two fifth-grade teachers. As I shared a couple of meetings ago, we, we went down to the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, went for a two-day conference there, heard some great speakers, saw, you know, what schools were doing three and four years down the road, and it was encouraging, because this is really our first year of implementation with the students. And so we've had, you know, all-school meetings and been a lot of work in the classrooms with classrooms, creating school, classroom charters. We created a whole school charter. And then we have a charter as well with the, with, for the staff. And so we're looking forward to, to moving forward. We can continue our relationship with, with Yale Center. And next year, we're looking forward to continuing the implementation with the kids, building emotional intelligence, and then working, you know, some family events. So we're progressing pretty well, so.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for Bill?
Next, could we go back to staff? Yeah, I just have some questions, some staffing questions. It looks like there's gonna be some changes and how ed assistants are gonna be assigned next year.
So yes, yes, I'm, I'm happy to take that question, actually, and, and just so you know, in terms of role and purview, that, that role really rests with the school administration. So we're, we're happy to report it out, but that, that's where, that's where that decision sits. So we did make a, a decision. We have, we have two programs, I'm assuming that's what you're talking about, the sale and step program. So we have two programs within the school district, the N P S at large, right, which is the five districts. But it really services the elementary, Union Fifty-four students. And so one of the things, like, when, we first started it, I think it was two years ago, I think, is when we first started it, and yeah, and at that point in time, one of the reasons, it was, there were a couple of things. I think one was philosophical. I think more than anything is we really wanted to try to keep our students in-house, right? We really wanted to keep them in the neighborhood programs, because these are generally children who would go off out of district or off Cape or to, at a district placement rather than staying here. And so I think one of the things that we were looking at was trying to make sure that our children stayed as close to home as we could keep them, so they had their neighborhood friends to play with and whatnot. So, so we, we started that, just to say, okay, do we think this can work or not? We knew that our only alternative was to send them out of district. So we, we did, we tried it for the first year. One of the things that we found, though, was that we were literally almost forcing different ed assistants, for example, into placements that they weren't necessarily comfortable with, or they didn't have the right skill set for, or they just, they just didn't like where they were, and they weren't necessarily in their home schools, because we were sending them off to another school, because the two schools were Eastham, in Eastham and Brewster. So we took a look at, we watched it for the year, and then we came back as a team and sat down as a team, because this is a district-wide, particularly Union Fifty-four. Because this is a district-wide, particularly Union Fifty-four and had that, that conversation and said, okay, what are next steps? If this is working, if we believe that this is the right thing, what are next natural steps for this program? And so one of the things that was clearly evident to us was to make sure that we had the right people in the right place. Otherwise, the program wasn't going to survive. So um, and again, then that would mean that our, our children would, would leave the district and we didn't want that. So we took a look at it and said, okay, then that's, that's what we're going to do. We will, um, because if you're sending somebody out of district, for example, you would already be making a change to your staffing because that need wouldn't be there anymore, right? So that, that would already be a change. So this way, I think, you know, what we, what we did is we did, we put some riffing in place, a reduction in force in place. And then basically re-advertize the positions and said, okay, so these are the positions. If you've got the interest, if you've got the desire, if this is what you'd like to do, then feel free to make application for those positions. So that's basically, so it's, it's a, it's a subtle shift. It didn't involve like ten or twenty people. It wasn't that. It was on a relatively small scale. But I think that we believe as a, as a team, that if we don't make this change, we don't see the program being successful. And we saw some things happening this year that we're uncomfortable with and said, no, we can do better. So that's, that's kind of the background for that.
How, how many positions total will Eastham be losing?
Well, I think, I think we riffed, it was a two, I want to say two positions, two positions were riffed.
And, and is it just the step program that is affected by those?
That this particular decision was, it was just a step, yeah, step and sail.
Okay. Um, and I, I do want to just continue to, to kind of ask questions about the, the staffing level for um, the early childhood program. It's like the K one-two and I'm just wondering, um.
Is there a specific concern?
Well, I just, I really appreciate that, um, how you said you really, really taking a look at what was working with the staff and kind of reevaluating and, and like deciding, you know, we can do better or this is really working and maybe this needs tweaking. And I'm just wondering what kind of process might go, um, go on, like you say, or like a, a building-based support team? Or anything that, um, that, that really looks at like how things are working in the classrooms in terms of like, are all kids' needs being met? And is there a way to kind of ensure that if, um, like, like I know there's, in the past, there used to be a um, ed assistance dedicated to kindergarten. And I, and you know, is there a way to kind of look to see if the data is, is supporting that? Not having that dedicated ed assistant, um, is it kind of impacting academic achievement or learning readiness?
So I think I'm going to start with this and then you can, if I miss anything, you can go after it. So I think there are a lot of things that, that we look at, you know, and I mean, when you look at the fact, for example, that we had to go all into Eastham this year, this, uh, you know, a, a month ago for seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dollar override. That weighs heavily on us. That weighs very heavily on us. So I mean, and, and this wasn't the only school district that had that, right? Brewster, we were in the exact same position in Brewster. So I think that when we look at these types of decisions, we look through a lot of different lenses. The fiscal lens is a lens. It's not the only lens though, right? But it, it's always a lens because we know that we're going out to the community to have to ask for another almost million dollars. And I remember saying in Brewster at one meeting, I don't think I said it here, it's not a comfortable place for us when we have to come back and ask for that kind of money. So that's one thing that weighs on us. In terms of reflection, I think that this is probably one of the most self-reflective administrative teams I think I've ever worked with. And, but we build that in, we build that into our team meetings. Uh, we do that on regular basis. Um, and I'm going to go like really broad and then kind of bring it down. So for example, if you're at an admin meeting, uh, sometimes we'll have sessions, like parts of that admin meeting where it's sessions learned. Like what are some things that we have learned along the way that we think are important for everybody to hear, not just us? So that's how self-reflective we are as a, a larger collective. And then you have a smaller, uh, it starts to kind of break down. Your Union Fifty-four principals, um, all the elementary principals meet regularly. Uh, very often they're meeting with Joanna. And that's another whole level where they do reflection on what's happening. Her role really has been instruction curriculum, although gosh knows, we ask her to do a million other things. But that is one of the roles that she plays. And so she's also questioning, how are things going? Where are we at? Let's talk about this program or that program. And they have that broader discussion, which is kind of like where step and sail came in and said, okay, we want to have a broader discussion about this. It wasn't one principal by themselves. It was collective group that said, we said, talk about this. Um, and so then you have that and then you bring it down to school level. And you will find that each of our elementary schools does the same kind of thing internally. Um, but in terms of staffing, that really does fall to your, your school-based administration. We are here to support, we're here to guide, we're here, here to help. But it, it is an administrative, um, I guess, one of the administrative roles that they fill. Keeping in mind that they still have to ultimately be responsible for the fiscal component too. So there are a lot of things, a lot of moving parts in all of this. But at the end, and, and I say this with all then, all sense of authenticity, there isn't one of our elementary schools. There's a one of our schools right now in N P S that I feel is not firing on all disciplines. They are, uh, the, the output, the, the level of product. If, if, if you're looking at it from a clinical lens, from a business lens, say, oh my gosh, look at what these children are learning in the classroom. Look at these bulletin boards. Look at what's happening in the classroom. It's so exciting. So I think to each of our principals' credit, they managed to fit it all together. But sometimes how the lens that we have to look through isn't necessarily the lens that everybody looks through. So I don't know if I've captured that or not.
Could I just ask one quick follow-up question? I, I love when you were talking about how kind of from the administrative level, you're like talking and you're reflecting and um, kind of problem solving. Is there an opportunity in Eastham Elementary School for like the boots-on-the-ground people? Like the staff to engage in that kind of dialogue as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah, the conversations, I've been here nine years.
Yeah.
We've had these conversations quite a bit. Um, and at this point, moving forward, just to say, I mean, I, I strongly believe that we're appropriately staffed to meet the needs of every child in the building.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I thank you both very much for that thorough. What your jobs are as opposed to things that we need to do. The physical part of the financial part, obviously part of our.
Go, go one step back.
Sure.
This is a question, your earlier report, not about. So with, with this, the, the ruler program. Staff and, and students are learning how to communicate emotional intelligence together with each other. Is there, is there a piece? Not necessarily with what you've implemented yet, but you sort of mentioned going to Yale, so you know, we're doing it this sort of three or four years down the line. Where this rolls home and parents start to be able to learn that emotional communication piece?
Yes, absolutely. And it, the way they, they ruled it out too, is that the, really, to be honest with you, the first step was to teach it to the staff. Do you know what I mean? Because the adults need emotional intelligence, right? In order to be able to instruct, you know, the students. And so I do have families so far, um, that have created charters at home. You know what I mean? And kind of taken uh, some of the things that the kids have learned in school. But I'd be happy, you know, as I said, moving forward next year is, is creating some family events and having people in. You know, I mean, I'm happy to share, um, you know, any sort of documentation and things and, and have families have access to, you know, some of the resources. Um, because yes, I, I agree. Um, and I've gotten some great feedback so far from, from families that kids are coming home and talking to them about things that, you know, they're like, wow, really? Okay, that's how you're feeling? All right, well, then what are you going to do with it? And, you know, how are you going to regulate it? So it's all, it's, it's good. I, I really like what's happening, you know, with the kids. There's a tremendous need. Um, but not just with the kids, you're right, with the adults as well.
Um, from a staff viewpoint, um, I just, the, the leadership team for ruler came on board when I came on board at Eastham. And they have been very clear about the rollout taking multiple years. They were very clear that first year was for staff. They were very clear that then we were going to practice doing it in our classrooms and across the co, community in the school. And the next step that they have planned is for the parents and the families to come on board. So right from the beginning, there was a clear rollout that was articulated to me and that they're right in the midst of it and they just got trained. So um, I've done responsive classroom before, which is one of my favorites, but ruler just fits so nicely into it. It works with my multilingual students. We have our own chart right in our classroom. They come in, they identify how they're feeling. So I'm really enjoying learning about ruler and how it fits into the other um, social emotional curriculums that I've used in the past. So I, I'm pleased with where we are and looking forward to where we go with the parents and the families. Thank you.
Yes, and my, and whenever we're ready for my report, I'm happy to report out. Am I next? Okay, sounds good. No, I have not already done that. Okay, so a couple of quick things, graduation, yes, Friday night. I know you've got this saying, we're looking forward to it, but it's happened. Um, and it was, it was just wonderful. I, I think, um, I, as I said last night, at, at the, uh, the Orleans meeting last night, it was inspiring. Those, those students, the talent of the students, the singing, the, the instrumental, the, the poise that they had as they were delivering theirs. Yeah, Joanna and I were sitting together. It was just inspiring to be there. And that's why I say, when you're looking at, you know, like you've got amazing elementary schools, but then they come into these amazing middle and high school. And it's such a nice through line for our students. And when you watch them walk across that stage that on Friday, oh my gosh, it was amazing. And to Bill's point too, the walkthrough, the senior walkthroughs, we started that last year. And they go through, at that morning, they go through all of their elementary schools. It's right across the district. And I was in Brewster and of course they've got their names because you never recognize them, like you would never recognize them. And they seem to change a lot between grade five and grade twelve and so. They're six foot two and they're, and uh, you know, the signs and the students clapping and yelling and the fist pumps and, oh my gosh, and the music blaring. And it was so cool. And so this is our second year of doing it. I hope we never stop because it is just an amazing part of our, our whole graduation process. Um, the second I may, item I have is we just want to say, uh, welcome to all of our new school committee members, soon to be school committee members. You can see that we've got school committee members coming on right across the, the N P S family this year and they're all listed there. Um, our grade eight promotion ceremony is coming up on June twenty-first at nine thirty in the morning. This is the first year that they're doing theirs in the, uh, in the morning, just like this is very different for our graduation to happen on a Friday night. And uh, that's, that was amazing too. I just want to go back to that for a minute. We literally went from sunshine to fog rolling in. And I thought, only because we're fifty miles out in the middle of the ocean, can you see all of these different, uh, natural things happening as you're sitting there on the field? Um, so the grade eight promotion, if anyone wants to show up, of course, you're more than welcome to, to do that. And of course, all the middle school and high school are all working on transitions and including with our elementary folks that are coming into the middle schools. So all of that's happening right now. And my last thing is just for budget wrap-up. And again, half-budget season. Um, you know, for us particularly in both Eastham and in Brewster. And so I just have a couple of things here. I, I just want to say. Um, I just want to thank all of our communities for your continued support and the value of education uh, you have for our children. We are so fortunate to live and work in communities that support the efforts in each of the individual districts and in the region. Our schools continue to do amazing things for students with caring staff and a focus on the whole child academically and beyond. And we continue to provide outstanding education in Naucet Public Schools in large part due to that support. So just so grateful to all of our communities and all of our Board of Selectmen, our FINCOMs, everybody that had a part in all of this. It's, it's a huge thing for us, that budget season. And uh, you know, it's, it's high stress as we get to the end and we're pulling things together. And I'm just so grateful to our staff and I'm grateful to our community. So just a huge thank you to everyone. And that's my report.
The next item on our agenda is the F Y twenty-four expenditure report review. Giovanna is not here this evening. As we know, on page, page eight, the bottom line, we are still negative forty-six thousand dollars. I'm sorry, we're, our net, we are still negative forty-six thousand dollars. Forty-six thousand. Um, and Giovanna, I know is working on this and she's in, she's um, been working with the town administration also. I apologize, cannot go any more detail than that because I don't have that much information. I don't have the financial background that Giovanna has on it. On it, um, but we know that by June thirtieth, we'll be at about a negative balance. Where we have, we're not, we'll be in a positive balance because that's required by law that we have to be. And there are various methods that Giovanna is using, approaching for this. I don't know if you have any.
Sure, sure. Uh, and I, if I miss anything, I know Bill can chime in, but yes. Um, we are, we are projecting right now likely more than the forty-six thousand dollar in the negative. We have had ongoing communication, uh, Gio, Gio's office has had on a go, ongoing communication with uh, Rich Panvenu and Jackie Beebe. We first approached them, I want to say in February, and I think we've even, Gio had said something to them earlier because we could see this coming. And you, you know, and I, I want to be really clear because Bill and I have had this discussion a number of times. This really i- is linked back to like not, not mismanagement of funds or anything like that. This is just where we happen to sit right at this point in time, um, with some of the situations that we have in our school right now. So this isn't a surprise to any of us. We've seen this coming all the way along and, and even the amount is not that big a surprise because we said to them earlier, earlier on that we were anticipating, uh, you know, upwards of a hundred thousand or somewhere in there. We weren't sure. And to be honest, we won't be sure until we get that much closer to June. Because every time you have a teacher missing or a, you know, of, of school and you're covering for that or an ed assistant or what, that all adds up money. So we don't know until we come into that last tail end of the month of June, that last week. And then we can say, okay, now we know pretty much exactly where we're going to be. So these are the projections as we sit here this evening. One of the things I'd say too is we did pull in from every little pocket we possibly could have, whether it was a uh, rural student aid, whether it was the last of the Esser monies, whether it was the last of, like, we pulled from every possible grant that we possibly could, that we could legally say that we could use that money for this. Because you can't just use that money for just anything, right? It has to be very specific. So um, Gio, it was very, very, very creative, um, and, and working with her team with, it wasn't Gio all by herself, it was her and her team. And letting Bill know, saying, we've got this, we've got that, can we pull this together? So it has been a bit of a mammoth undertaking for our offices to work through that and get to, get us to where we're at right now. So that's just a little bit more context on that.
Thank you very much. And Mary, I'm sure that um, Giovanna will keep you informed as she's going, you know, through the process. As I said, she's away right now, but when she gets back, she'll be working this full-time basically.
I, I have an email from her, uh, that's dated June third, that says that the, um, the amount that's needed is a hundred and nine thousand.
I think that that's what she, they, she's put that as the, like, probably not, I don't want to say not to exceed number, but I think that that's kind of like the most conservative number that she could put out there. And then we're hoping it's not that high. That's where we're sitting at right now.
So I, I'm just saying that, that you're saying that now it's forty-six.
Well, that's where it's sitting at. That's without the rest of the school year finishing out.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're expecting that we'll still have more expenditure shares between now and the end of the year. So that forty-six thousand that she's talking about right now, that's on the expenditure report, is just on the expenditure report as of the end of last month, right? So we've got another whole month to get through here.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate your coming there during our meetings. It's been a really great year for building a relationship with our FINCOM members. Certainly.
Has this happened before?
It, I could speak to that. It happened probably, I've done it for fifteen years. I want to say it happened about maybe twelve years ago. When the town loaned us, I think of the town's about twenty-five thousand dollars. I can't remember the exact amount. And then we, we paid that money back within the next year.
Okay, sometimes.
Normally you're working with.
Normally we have monies left over. Yeah, normally we have monies left over. And to what, what Anna is talking about is what we still have to do. And to what what Ann is talking about is what we still have to do, what we'll have to do again at the end of this is apply for circuit breaker. Um yes, in this case, we'll be applying for circuit breaker and any other funds that we can grab for that still end of the year um within special education, for example. And then it it will come in after the end of June. And that's what Ann's talking about. Then we, you know, we can pay some of that back or whatever, depending on what we get, because we don't know what we're going to get. We can apply for it, but then we get told how much we're going to get. Doesn't mean that, because we've applied for, pick a number of sixty thousand, we're gonna get sixty thousand.
I think Giovanna applied for several grants. She might get some money out of earlier this year.
We did.
School stuff and everyone refused, everyone, all grants refused throughout the state, not just here, but throughout the state.
And then suddenly, out of nowhere, we got a rejection letter from Meister. And then all of a sudden, we got an acceptance letter for nine thousand dollars out of the. So you just, you just really don't know is what I'm saying.
And historically, the monies that have been surplus, what happens?
Well, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um what happens is normally we look to, we could legally apply some of those to the next year. Like we've applied to payment for preschool, early payment for preschool funding or wherever, that could, they could be legally applied to the next year. We do that so that we can, a little bit of a head start, but to try to avoid when service just like this fall out lap.
Just these are unanticipated expenses.
Yeah, I understand that part. I'm just trying to figure out like, oh, is this every year?
No, this is a bit of an anomaly.
And I understand.
Yeah.
Seen the trust meetings, I understand what's going on and why it's an anomaly.
The other thing, though, that what 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 we're hoping for for us and like, hopefully even next year is what our other communities have been doing now is set up a stabilization fund for special education. And so, for example, like I I think um, well, two years ago, Brewster put a hundred thousand dollars in. And we had to go back that year and ask for most of it. I think seventy thousand, I think is what we had to go back for before like this time of year, in fact, you know, we had to go back and ask for some of that money. Um Wellfleet will be setting their account up at the next town meeting. Um Orleans set their account up last year and they had about fifty thousand that they put into it. And they're hoping to put, they won't have exactly fifty thousand this year, but probably run that thirty thousand mark that they're trying to earmark just specifically for that. So the hope is that each of our communities, our elementary schools can build up a specialized, a special ed stabilization account so that we don't have these big, you know, um lips in our system for for budgeting purposes.
Thank you very much. Um the next item on our agenda is summer meeting schedule. And I'm proud to say that we hopefully there will not be a summer meeting scheduled or needed. Um as I said, once we get Sarah formally appointed, we'll have a quick meeting to do, just just for the school committee to um assign, you know, do roles and get subcommittee, subcommittee appointments made. But other than that, at this point, I don't see a need for a school committee meeting. Sometimes it gets to August and there may be something may come up, but normally we don't in July. Usually we take a deep breath and try to relax a little bit. Uh let's see, policy approval. Before we get to this, I should say, a quick little thing to my members of committee who are involved in this. I did speak, I did speak to the person from MASK, the state. And what Jim did was unbeknownst to us, we thought he was sending finalized versions. And Jim thought it'd be best if he sent, showed you was the working version, stuff like, all the work we put into it. So anything you have in print. You know, but what's what's not crossed out, they're the final versions. So that's why it's been a little confusing because as sheer, I didn't know that's what was happening because that was not originally intended. But that's what's been happening and that's why it's caused some confusion with several of the, you know, committee members throughout the system. And as I said, the legal matters are all addressed. It's the grammatical errors, grammatical matters, we'll go back to afterwards. And go make sure all the she's, he's, theirs are in places appropriate as the parents, guardians, and all those other terms. And that says, you know, district throughout versus school and all the anomalies are now sitting in there. We're going to finalize those before you folks get to actually approve it finally in September, hopefully. Um this, the ones you were asking about last time, the ones from section I, I looked at all those, those were all finalized.
So the little headings about.
That's because those, those were working questions and they were. I knew that two of them, five, two of them, I checked with John himself. I know those, but I made sure the others were too and they were. Any other questions or issues about accepting I, J, K, and L for in form?
I just have to say, you know, was just having to read them was so important. I can't imagine actually we're crafting them and finalizing them, it must.
It's been, it's been two years. It's been two years of work. But at least.
A lot of work.
We've got it. We're getting, we're getting done inch by inch, it seems like, but it is getting done. But I appreciate the fact that you folks are actually going to go over those again and see what's happening and what you think of them and any questions or concerns that you have. That's the important piece because these are the policies we all live by.
I really have appreciated the opportunity, you know, to really see, you know, how how NOSAT is really kind of thinking about education and putting policies in place to support.
Well, we were really lucky. Our policy, policies had been has going to have been reviewed in the last several years. So we are much better off than some of the systems outside of NOSAT have reviewed policies in ten years. So they are like literally starting to play policy manuals all over again. The policy manuals are online. And that's the format they've been using because they felt, when I first started, we had the, like I have at home because I've been working with it, but we had the actual policy printed out, but the problem became when policies changed or updated, people didn't have the updated versions. So no one was really sure what was right and what was wrong. So that's what happened with that. And being online, I was in another meeting with a question of a policy, and it was, there were no numbers. We can't find the page numbers. They're not numbered for the same reason. So if if one is removed, you don't have to go back and renumber the whole pay, the whole section of the policy manual that you've now attached. So that's those, that's the logic behind how it's being done.
Can you say online?
On the website, on the, on the NOSAT website. If you go on the NOSAT website, you can buy, you will get to be able to pull off the policy meeting from there.
When you say the NOSAT website, NOSAT Public School.
NOSAT Public School, that's right.
Sorry.
No, I mean, I think this is kind of the challenge in broadcasting the policy to everybody. If I'm a parent of the elementary school, I don't go to NOSAT Public School.
No, it's, it's, it's the NOSAT.
Is is there any value? I, that's why, so my question is, is there value in redundancy when I'm on the Eastham Elementary School website? Having a link that says, here's the policy. And it's done already, but like I would think I'd find like the student handbook for your school. I'd find the other items specific to Eastham, but in this one case, something kind of applies globally. I I'd love to be able to do that, to be able to point to parent, not to have to go to another website.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's really difficult because we are a bit of a, an interesting, challenging hierarchy with the five completely separate school districts, all under one name of the NOSAT public schools, you know, family of schools. But five completely distinctly different school districts. So yeah, it makes it, it makes things like this a little, a little odd.
And my thought, I hoped this month, I just got too busy this month, I'd like to see maybe for the first meeting next year, having had a technology here. Because I have, I really haven't met him yet. I'm kind of like waved and said, hi, and that's about it. But um I'd like to have him here so that we can ask him these questions, Devin. You know, can we improve? He's the one who first wrote and modified this website to be the great website it now is. And maybe, you know, what could, what should we, what do our members suggest, what does the public suggest that'll make it easier, make it a more user friendly website? Overall.
But it's a great point. I I would, I would agree with you. It's a great point.
I battle the same thing professionally, just trying to have fewer places to have to send people to get information.
Yeah.
But then it becomes also.
And I, I'm, I'm about the same thing as a senior citizen who's using technology. Who should get for one place, Robert, it makes me crazy when it's not all the one, the little point on this, you get everything you need.
So what other kind of question connected this, you just mentioned it. So is there a uh school by school individual technology policy? Or is there simply the NPS? Technology policy?
Those policies up to the whole district.
Right.
Such cool handbook though too, has that listed in it.
Yeah. Yeah, but like you said, it's it's different. It's not, not a lot of cell phones coming into elementary school. So your policy might not look the same as maybe.
You know that that's a topic for us right now. Did you know that, Devin?
I'm sure Devin does have a kind of, have a similar in school.
But so my only question with the section J was just actually was about student publications and trying to figure out if publications are sort of this relic of like printed material. And so as you sort of read through the spirit of the policy, it doesn't say specifically, it's got to be printed, but thinking about for actions that are taken and broadcasted, and I think about publication could be a tweet, it could be a webpage, it could be a comment on. And that's where thinking about like, where does that fit in your overall policy, guys? Is that just something that's, the students?
It's a great question.
This thing, or is that in your? Plus, living with the dean of students for a living. Think about, but no.
But but no, but they're great questions and things that need to be brought up. And like I, as I said, I would like to have him come here after a meeting and get this brought out at the meeting and then bring it all back to the policy committee, subcommittee.
Yeah.
And get it addressed. But for now, we can be willing to accept sections I, J, K, and L for proof in form.
Section two.
Motion, please.
Form, please.
Second, thank you all in favor. I thank you all very, very much. And that's the end of having to accept it all in form. You've now accepted the whole policy manual in form. Hard to believe.
Congratulations.
Okay. We did not list.
Until next year.
Yes, next year, two excellent changes. Uh we did not list reports of subcommittees this time around because, you know, I don't think any of the subcommittees have actually met at this point in life. We're all trying to reorganize and get our heads stretched in the right direction for next year because we're going on. Um the next piece is approval minutes for the meeting of May fourteen, twenty twenty four.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from May fourteen, twenty twenty four.
A second to that. I can't second.
It'll have to be you, Devin, sorry. We haven't got Sarah on full board yet.
A vote, please. All in favor. I accept it, Amanda, as written. Now with that in mind, uh the next session, um we have, we will be going to executive session. So I have to ask everyone other than the school to me to leave the room. We may be coming back into, out of executive session when we're done.
No, you don't make you come back, no.
We understand you don't want us to hang around. Thank you all that coming.
Thank you. And Josh, I I texted Josh and he's in as well right now. So as soon as you get in here.
Thank you so much. You've been awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So have we made the motion to go into executive session? Okay, let's do that, Ben. Okay, thanks, Amanda.
I need a motion to go into executive session, please.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
Section by Devin has. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So there is a very specific motion here that we need to read. So uh just because of this, the your lawyer's here and he's going to say something if we don't do it right. And he's saying yes. So there's, there is a motion at the bottom. If you take a look.
At your page.
Um yeah, just look at the very bottom of page number seven. And the motion is right there. So you're gonna just make the motion and you can just read, actually, Ann can read it, I, yeah.
Uh pursuant to Master of Laws three oh four, three oh thirty A, excuse me. We're going to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with teachers, educational assistants, and the administrative assistants. Unions, if an open meeting, an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee and the chair so declares, which we agree on that. We will return to open session after our discussion.
That's correct. Now somebody can second it.
Second, now you second.
Second option.
And now you need to take the vote.
All accepted. Aye.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh we have just come out of executive session. I'd like to report that the Eastham Elementary School Committee has has agreed on the collective bargaining agreements for the teachers, the NEA teachers, the NEA educational assistants, and the NEA administrative assistant unions. And I thank you all for your time and efforts in doing this, bringing this together. And one last, that's one last thing to do, a motion to adjourn. We'd like to make that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.